Recording in progress.
This is Mary. It's now four P M.
Thank you, Mister Clerk. I called to order the City of Fulton Virtual Work Session Tuesday, September fourteenth, twenty twenty one at four P M. Mister Clerk, would you call the role, please?
We'll call the Honorable William Bill Edwards, Mayor.
Here.
The Honorable Catherine F. Rau, District One.
Present.
The Honorable Carmelita Gums, District Two.
Present.
The Honorable Helen Z. Willis, District Three.
Present.
The Honorable Naima Gilard, District Four.
Present.
And the Honorable Corey A. Reeves, District Five.
Accountable for.
The Honorable Councilmember Khalid, District Six.
Present.
And the Honorable Mark Baker, District Seven. Mister Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you so much. Call the first presentation, please.
Yes, the first presentation is item one, American Rescue Plan Funding. This presentation will be presented by Terrell Jacobs with the Georgia Municipal Association.
Mister Jacobs, welcome.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Appreciate being here. And I've just, as Elizabeth Taylor told all of her husband, I won't keep y'all alone.
Okay, right.
Um, so let us, I'm gonna go through these pretty quick so y'all, if y'all wanna answer, ask any questions. So technically where we are, uh, your one point four billion ARPA fund, twenty-three metro cities, which are directly funded, which that's where y'all stand. Five hundred and fifteen NEUs non-entitlements communities and pretty much all, just as today, we probably have five hundred and twenty-eight cities that have already secured their funds. So we're, we're, we're pretty much well over ninety percent. Next slide. Uh, so, okay, where, where do we at now? Uh, so what's next? Next slide. So, you know, one of the issues that we're facing across the state, everybody's got competing needs and different challenges in their community and the interim rule, uh, which is a hundred and fifty page, fifty-one page document has not been finalized as of yet. So, next slide. So with that, you know, what are the next steps? What should we do? Uh, so the next slide. So the big thing that we're advocating and, and strongly suggesting is please slow down and stop, 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 stop. We've actually have cities that have already gone ahead and expended their monies, probably not in the most appropriate ways, uh, even as we speak without the final guidance, uh, as in place. Now, that doesn't mean that they have done anything that they may, may not get challenged for it, and maybe they may get challenged for it. So we, we still don't know. Uh, but as you can imagine, uh, all this is being developed, uh, pretty quickly, the rules, uh, all the feedback is over nineteen thousand, uh, local governments across the, the, the country. So it's just not, just not local governments, is also, uh, school systems, uh, counties, uh, other entities, nonprofits. So it's a lot that they happen to respond to, to make sure that these rules will be for the betterment of these communities in relationship to this pandemic. Next slide. So things to keep in mind. Once again, the interim rules not finished. Uh, we do have some frequent asked questions. Please, please look at that. Uh, there's no urgency, and that's why we say stop. There's no urgency to spend these monies immediately. You got a deadline to encumber or incur costs to December thirty-first, twenty-four, and a deadline to spend these funds to December thirty-first, twenty-six. So you got plenty of time to make a very informed decision. Uh, next slide. So the do's and don'ts. Next slide. So obviously, things to keep in mind. Uh, don't rush to spend the money. Fail to read and understand the, uh, the, uh, Treasury Guidance is critical. Make, uh, make no premature, uh, commitments. One of the things that some are doing is some of their elected officials are out there making these commitments of some of these NEUs, some of these people in their community. We've even had the clergy, uh, make, uh, requests to these cities about, uh, helping them in regards to projects initiatives in their communities. Next slide. Things to keep in mind, uh, you know, the final rule's not in place. Uh, there are a lot of pots of funds out here, a lot, pots of money out here, and I'll talk about that in a minute. Uh, work with your county and, and the community to assess your needs. Plan, plan, plan. Don't do anything without proper planning. Next slide. Uh, community planning, be visionary, decide what you want to, uh, be meaningful. Include all stakeholders, uh, to the table, school systems, uh, not, any, uh, any use, I mean, uh, nonprofits, excuse me, those individuals that will help you determine citizens inclusive, uh, business owners, uh, to determine how and what is the best and maximize use for these funds. Learn from your peers. There's a lot of exchange being going on right now. Please con- contact your peers, talk with them, see what they're looking at and what they're attempting to do. Next slide. Uh, how can, uh, my city use these ARPA funds? Uh, so how, these are the four broad categories, if you will, uh, in regards to the response of the COVID issue, premium pay, uh, provisions for loss of, uh, revenue, and dealing with the infrastructure, water, sewer, stormwater, uh, which is, uh, under Clean Water Provision and broadband. So those are the broad categories for that. Next slide. So, uh, how can my city use these ARPA funds? So we got a lot of stuff. This hyperlink goes to all those six sixty eligibility. So, uh, we're just gonna go through a few. Next slide. We're gonna race through these, cause, next slide. So, uh, th- these are just some on the public health. Uh, I'm not gonna read all these. Go, go ahead. Next slide. Uh, here's the negative impact, economic impact, here, how you can utilize some of those. Next slide. Uh, service to disproportionate impact to communities, uh, qualify census tract. If it's in a qualified census tract, pretty much per se, it's pretty a broad depth of, uh, what you can do in regards to utilizing those funds in that regard. Uh, next slide. Premium pay. Uh, a lot of folks are getting kind of twisted up on this. Uh, they wanna do something for their employees who are essential workers. That's fine, as long as you able to back it into this formula in regards to that. Um, and, uh, as you see, retroactive since the start of the pandemic, that, that's amenable. Uh, now the one thing is you gotta be able to sustain this going forward. So some have looked at doing quote-unquote bonuses. I know your auditor may not appreciate that terminology, but, uh, so obviously you have to look at what's the best term for you. Next slide. All right, infrastructure, uh, under Clean Water Act, all that's applicable, uh, water, wastewater, uh, conveyance, combined sewer system, stormwater, uh, all these, uh, are amenable to that. Broadband, this is a big one out there because, uh, not so much probably in metro, but in some of these rural communities where they're having, uh, issues with, uh, internet broadband access due, dealing with this pandemic. It has been a last mile issue and a cost of service issue for some. Uh, we have some communities having to pay a hundred and forty dollars for internet access, uh, for some of these I S Ps. So, next slide. So how can my city use the ARPA funds? There's some as far as dealing with backlog of your courts, uh, responding to the pandemic. Uh, all those things up under there, dealing with crime prevention, community violence issues, things of that nature, overtime, dealing with bad, the increase in violence, all those related potential spend. Next slide. Uh, this one at the top, parks and recreation, that was added in, uh, and the reason why it was added in under the interim guidance is because of input from cities and counties across the country. Uh, so as you can imagine, uh, obviously, as we stated, these are interim rules. So, you know, obviously when the interim rules, they want your input, they want your ideas of what should be beneficial. And leisure services, parks and recreation has a, a, an impact in regards to health and well-being of a community. So that's why I believe they added it in there. Here's some other things I've got listed here, that we got listed here, but applicable up on that. Next slide. So, uh, just some project ideas, nothing substantial. As you can see, we got them clean up your wastewater hole in ponds, uh, it's for that private-public partnership with internet services, with county school system, replacement of water pumps, all those are ideas. Some cities are get struggling with trying to figure out how do they get down to the specifics as far as a detailed project, a shovel-ready project. Uh, these are some broad categories, but once again, have some justification tying back into those, you know, four general, uh, categories. I think that would be the best approach to deal with that. Next slide. Other sources for project ideas, uh, you can go to N L C. Uh, they got a lot of information on that. Uh, you know, there, you see all the, uh, hyperlinks here. We have this on our website, FEMA. Uh, we'll be talking about that in a minute. They got a lot of money being delved down from FEMA, uh, and also economic, uh, E D A as far as that too. But these are just some other ideas of, of project opportunities that you might be considering on these websites. Next slide. Uh, here is some other leveraging funds, uh, to help address your community needs. As you may have heard about, uh, President Biden, uh, tax credit, that's out there to leverage that, uh, rental assistance. Now, here's how this has developed here in the state of Georgia, can't speak to other states, but, uh, the D C A has close to a billion dollars in rental assistance program and mortgage assistance. And counties, uh, some of the entitlement communities, counties have also got those money. I know Fulton County has a program in place, uh, as we speak. Uh, so definitely leverage those dollars. You know, we got some cities that want to utilize their money for rental assistance and help those uh, constituents, those rentals in that regard, but obviously those monies out there. Now, let me say this, uh, D C A, uh, out of almost a billion dollars, they've, I think the number's now close to about twenty-five million that they've expended. So they're a long way. But this rental assistant money will be going on for the next three to four years. So obviously that will still be a, a time opportunity to help those individuals in distress need. Uh, next slide. Um, here's FEMA, uh, as you can see, fifty billion dollars for disaster relief. This is technically a disaster in that regard. Uh, those are opportunities of funds there. Uh, as you can see, some other categories, the safer grant, which I know a lot of the fire departments and the police departments uh, look at, those are funds out there. Uh, there's a contact number, uh, for the FEMA rep and, uh, District Region Four that you can contact. But those are some monies as well. Next slide. Uh, you know, your S B A, uh, obviously, uh, they do have some funds, but they have more technical assistance. They're there to help some of your business owners, uh, get in a better position. I know a lot of business owners took advantage of the PPP loan. Uh, I know some folks have, uh, shall we say, taken advantage of that and, uh, uh, shall we say, uh, did some inappropriate stuff. So, uh, but that's, that's on those business owners in regards to, but they're still out there helping people in that regard. Next slide. Uh, help for small businesses, technical systems, as I mentioned, uh, those type of situations. Next slide. Uh, here's just the contact number for the Small Business Development Center. Uh, they have eighteen offices across the state, so definitely reach out to them. Next slide. All right, here's the thing, I wanna talk to you about the E D A. Uh, this just, uh, this came out not too long ago, uh, talks about the fundings. Now, uh, if you go to the next slide for me, here's where it breaks it down. Here's how much money that's out there for, uh, application. You got, uh, build better, build back better, uh, regional challenge, a billion dollars, uh, good job challenge, that's five hundred million, and it goes down from there. So not a extremely whole lot of money, but the challenge that we finding out is a lot of folks don't know about these monies, so less people are gonna apply. So that means it's, it's a great opportunity. Your percent, your, your chances of getting this money are, are more of a beneficial situation. Next slide. So, uh, they launched these programs to help expand and create, uh, with high wages as y'all are hearing across the state, across the country. Uh, one of the distress issues is people are not going back to work because of wages. So, uh, definitely, uh, there's an opportunity there to help these individual businesses, companies with that. Uh, these, these dollars are set out there for that under rule development. Next, next slide. So under that provision, uh, they got grants bound, five hundred to two million dollars that it may be, it's, it's competitive, but it's available. Uh, there's a rise grant, um, is, which is the ruling in innovation, stronger economy. Uh, so all these are helped to help deal with addressing, uh, paying a little bit higher wages, dealing with workforce issues, uh, and hopefully incubator facility issues. So great programs there, uh, that individual, uh, communities can apply for, or, or nonprofits as well, so to help those individuals in your community. Next slide. All right, here's where, uh, the, the lar- uh, kind of the largest piece, uh, if you'll go to the next slide for me. This is the State Physical Recovery Fund, as y'all may have heard, and that date on there is wrong. Actually, Governor Kemp has pushed this back to October the thirty-first for, uh, local governments to apply. Uh, the state has about close to four billion dollars of funds that they're gonna, uh, delve out through, uh, their, uh, through the, uh, O P D, through the, uh, portal. If you go to the next slide. And how this, uh, excuse me, back up one, I'm sorry, I went too fast. How this is gonna work is that you'll have the ability to apply for these funds, uh, and they got three or four categories, economic distress, uh, water and sewer, and broadband, uh, those three or four areas. And so you have the ability to apply. Now, some of those same provisions under the ARPA, under the hundred and fifty-one pages, will apply to, uh, some of these state funds that they are able to give out. Once again, not a lot of folks are applying for this. Initially, their deadline was April, uh, August the thirty-first. So some folks just didn't feel that they have enough capacity to apply for it, so they didn't apply for it. Uh, now the deadline has been pushed back to October thirty-first. We'll probably have a few more people participate, but we have a lot, about seventy to seventy-five uh, cities that are less than five thousand. They just don't have the depth of, uh, staff to help them. Uh, they rely heavily on the engineer or some consultant to help them, engineering firms or consultants to help them with this. And they're a little overwhelmed with all the, you know, issues that they gotta deal with. Next slide. Um, so the, here's the reporting requirements. I'm not gonna go too deep into that, but as y'all know, uh, y'all deadline was, uh, uh, August thirty-first. I think they gave y'all a little extension on that. So hopefully y'all have already completed your report in that regard. Y'all's report's a little bit more in-depth than the NEUs non-entitlement communities, which theirs, uh, is, uh, within the next month of October. Uh, so but keep in mind, uh, once again, uh, all this has not been inching stone, uh, as far as the final rules, so there might be some tweaking of the reporting requirements in the near future. Next slide. Uh, the NEUs, which is not applicable to y'all, those are information as far as the deadline and all that. Next slide. All right, uh, you know, reporting guidance, uniform administration requirements, that is in here, administrative calls, cash management, you need to have all these things in place. Once again, this is federal dollars, uh, in that regard. Next slide. So, uh, the closing and out, uh, you know, obviously, definitely check in with the Treasury website. We still, we are still waiting on the final report, a final guidance. We were, we were hoping that it would have it sometime in the middle part of September. Uh, but from what I was advised by our federal advocacy person Becky today, that it seems as though they've had to address some other issues, so in regards to reporting requirements from y'all as metro or entitlement community. So they're trying to pivot to address getting that cleaned up or addressed, and then they will hopefully get the final, uh, guidance out, hopefully by the end of this month, first of October. Next slide. So what's next? Infrastructure bill, as y'all may be in hearing, it's about one point two trillion dollars over eight years. Uh, those are all the categories that may change due to the fact that they're still negotiating. Uh, G M A has worked with Congress, White House to ask for this. Once again, this is with the ARPA funds, this is the first time that local governments have gotten, especially NEUs, have gotten direct funds from, uh, from the federal government. We are hoping that these funds could be directly, uh, funneled to local governments as well. Uh, but time will tell. We'll see. Uh, but definitely we want to hopefully keep the momentum going. Like I said, we got ninety, ninety, over ninety percent of all of our cities in the state of Georgia have, uh, been awarded these funds thus far. Next slide. So just, just a breakdown of the categories. Sorry for the small print, but I think this, uh, Saddler has, Sally Jones has this, they give out to y'all. But those are some of the categories and the proposed financing sources for some of these opportunities as well. Next slide. So I'll say this in closing, uh, one of the concerns that we at G M A have had is that cities rush to judgment, rush to make commitments about spending these dollars. If you have time, please involve your community, get as much input as you can. Have a very deliberate conversation with a lot of your stakeholders, individuals, school systems, county, about how, you know, so, so there's no duplication, or shall we say, you can leverage all the dollars that you can, uh, in regards to this. So definitely, I hope that this has been a bit of help to you. So if you have any questions, I'll yield for that.
But thank you, thank you, Mister Jacobs. Uh, Miss Councilmember McGilhard.
Um, thank you, Mister Jacobs. This was really, really excellent, cause I had so many questions, and you shared a lot of things that I didn't know anything about. But one of the things that I am interested in, and the reason being, I was at a meeting over the weekend, and someone came up to me who has a nonprofit, and his whole focus was on people that are beginning to lose their homes. People are, he said, it's in the millions. And he wanted to know what our city was, uh, going to do about it. And I sat there with a blank look on my face, because I really didn't know what to say. I knew that we had American rescue money. I didn't know if we were able to start spending it. I didn't know whether or not we had anything in place. And so, um, just tell me, where are we in relationship to being able to help people who are losing their homes? And, and what can, can we do and what can't we do?
Well, as I stated before, the state of Georgia's got close to a billion dollars, uh, rental assistance slash mortgage assistance. Those dollars are out there for that purpose, to save people from being displaced, from whether they're a homeowner or they're renter. Uh, you know, the, the tragedy of circumstance, I'm just being honest. I mean, there, there hadn't been a whole lot of information out there that the state has provided. And, uh, we've been trying to push that information out as much as we possibly can. And hence the reason why we like to do these presentations, to let y'all know whether the opportunity's out there, because, you know, your citizen will lean on y'all, uh, just to, you have all the answers and all the solutions. So so anyway, that, that's kind of where it's at right now. So D C A has a website up. They, they, they have a, a, a project manager person who's shepherding that. Sharp young lady, she'll be glad to help out whoever that NEU person is, the, uh, M P O person, help move along with that.
Okay.
I'm gonna call you when I get over there to Popeyes, okay? Let, let, let me share this one thing for you, if there's any other question. Some communities have tried to tie to, uh, President Biden's executive order in regards to equity and inclusion in relationship to disadvantaged communities across the country, and have suggested that those monies need to be, those ARPA funds need to be directly spent for that purpose. But as you can, as you would know, um, that's an executive order. An executive order does not have any, uh, shall we say, authority over a appropriation bill. Now, it is being strongly suggested, but it has no power over, uh, an appropriation bill. So just to let y'all know, cause some communities have been hit up by that. I'm just being honest with you. Some communities of color have been hit up by that. Yeah.
Before we, before we go in, for the mayor pro temp, I just had a very important family emergency. I got to leave now, so I will turn this meeting over to you.
Thank you. Um, can you help me to determine who's in the queue, um, uh, Mister Adams? Um, and also can you call Mister Adams to see how I can get access to the queue?
All right. Yes, uh, yeah, currently next was, uh, Councilmember, uh, Mayor Pro Tim Willis.
Okay. Um, Mister Jacobs, um, is there, does the school system get, uh, their own funding?
Yes, ma'am. They, they receive funding from the Department of Education via through Treasury, and, uh, they actually got a substantial amount of money. Uh, y'all, y'all, you know, y'all got a decent amount, but they, they got quite a bit, uh, of those funds as well. And that's hence the reason why there, there needs to be a lot of collaboration, especially in this pandemic, individual, uh, school kids being impacted uh, in regards to, uh, you know, being able to, uh, have access to school. So the, the, the money's there, uh, and the, and have access to schools. So the, the, the money's there, uh, and the, and they're deciding how they're gonna spend their money. And I think the same requirements, this deadlines are, are almost on the same with the schools.
And thank you for answering that, because when you talk about duplication of efforts, um, you're right, the county got a substantial amount of money, the school got a substantial amount of money. So, I mean, I'm of the, uh, you know, I, I don't mind collaborating, but when you start talking about giving, uh, teachers raises, I mean, they got their own part of funding. Where our municipality, where we really need, um, you know, assistance is a lot of infrastructure. Um, you know, we lost revenue with having our park and recreation facilities down, and we need to repair a lot of our facilities. And so, um, I just, I'm glad that you mentioned that we need to make sure that we're not duplicating efforts. Because, um, what I don't want is people to go to the county and get assistance, and then still come to the city and get assistance. Um, you know, that's, that's, it's just, I don't think that's the best use of funding. It's, and, and would you, would you agree or disagree?
Yes, ma'am, I, I agree, uh, cuz obviously, you know, the, the purpose of these funds for all these entities is to collaborate, not duplicate, and, and, and maximize the use of this fund for the, for the improvement of these communities beyond this pandemic. But it's gonna take two or three years for us to get, get back to some normalcy. It's just not a, a, a one-shot deal. This is, money is to help you in your community, get beyond this and get some stability over the next two or three years, so.
Okay, thank you, sir. Uh, Mr. Adams, who's in the queue next?
Uh, currently, we do not have anyone in the queue.
Hold on a second, ma'am. All right, um, does anyone have any questions, any more questions for Mr. Jacobs before we go to the next item?
Councilmember Willis, if you don't mind, I just wanted to thank, um, Carol Jacobs for today's presentation. Um, I had an opportunity to hear, uh, another GMA staff person present this information during the GMA conference. And very recently, um, the city managers, a few of us get together on a monthly basis, uh, for virtual meetings. And, and I learned that Taro had given this particular presentation at another city. So, uh, that particular ci- uh, city manager was very complimentary and very, uh, appreciative uh, to Taro, and I knew that that was something that this council could benefit from as well. So I, I, I wanna thank you, Taro, for, uh, presenting to the, the council, uh, the staff and to the public, uh, today. So thank you very much.
Glad to do it. Thank y'all for having me, and, uh, y'all have a blessed day. All right.
Thank you.
Okay, and, um, I've asked, uh, several times, did anyone have any more questions? We need to move on to the next agenda item, but Mr. Baker, I do see your hand up. Can you please, uh, go ahead and proceed, and this will be the last question, cuz we need to proceed to the next agenda item?
Thank you so much for acknowledging me. Um, I'm having technical difficulties today, so I do apologize. I just wanted to make a comment because I don't wanna lose perspective on the comments that, uh, I don't want us to lose perspective on the comments that we just heard regarding, uh, the funding for schools. Um, I think that outside of myself, in the last meeting, there were a couple of other our colleagues who were talking about making partnerships with schools. And I think that we shouldn't get lost in the fact that they're gonna get money, because we do know that there are disparities between North and South Counties. Uh, even though it is one Fulton County school system, we know that the funds aren't allocated appropriately, and I know that that's a, a totally separate body. But it's up to us to do what we need to do, even if concessions are made, to make the right partnerships to, to those disparities, uh, in our, in our schools, in our immediate area. So I don't want us to completely void that out, albeit they do have funding. Uh, tho- those, the North and South funding are completely different. And our schools, in our cities, are normally left, uh, unattended to on, on a lot of things. For example, the PTSA, it's a, it's a thirty thousand dollar budget approximately on North County su- schools, while we are struggling with approximately about five thousand dollars, uh, in each of our schools. And we're forcing our teachers to pay a percentage of it, and it, it just, we just have to take our own. If we wanna change, we have to change something or do something different or unique, and I don't think we should be closed off to it. Thanks so much for acknowledging me, Aya.
Mr. Jacobs, do you have a dollar amount that the school systems were given? Or can you get that and send that over, um, specifically Fulton County?
I, I would imagine, uh, Mayor Pro Tem, uh, that is a matter of public record. Uh, so, uh, we were not privy to the schools' boards across the state of Georgia's, uh, information, uh, nor the county per se. So, uh, we were only privy to what, you know, uh, entitlement cities and, and cities were gonna get. So, yeah.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm gonna say this, and, and I'm gonna end. I mean, we all were elected, uh, the county has their governing body, the school system have their governing body, municipalities have their governing body. For every dollar, um, the school systems get over fifty, fifty cent of every dollar. While all of us, majority of us have in some way supported our school system, and we know that our school system is important, um, and impacts directly the economic viability of our city. But all of us are consistently getting, um, uh, blasted for wanting more sidewalks. You know, wanting cleaner streets, wanting street sweepers. Um, our, as a new city, as a four-year-old city, what we are really, really lacking is the infrastructure. So I think that we need to watch duplicating any efforts, um, that are taking place. And we need to put our, uh, funding, one-time funding to the best use, um, and, and, and address the most critical need that our municipality, um, is facing at this time. So I'm looking forward with the rest of my colleagues to work collaboratively, uh, to make sure that we're using these funds to the best, um, and, and addressing the most critical needs of the city. Thank you. Um,
Excuse me, Mayor Pro Tem, I just thought about something. I have a quick-
Excuse me, I said that was the last comment.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Jacobs, thank you so much. Your presentation was excellent. Um, I'm sure we all got a copy of the presentation. Um, Mr. Adams, can you please sign the next item on the agenda?
Yes, the next item is the Urban Redevelopment Agency, URA update. Uh, the presentation will be provided by Antonio Valenzuela, who's Director of Department of Public Works.
Good afternoon, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Willis and, and Council. Uh, it is, um, my pleasure to bring back to you, uh, a summary of the URA and, uh, be, uh, transparent and, uh, uh, do as much as possible comprehensive on where we are on the URA. Uh, next page, please. Uh, this page displays the original URA approved by, uh, mayor and council, which was adopted in June nineteen, two thousand and nineteen. We have thirteen URAs. Within each URA, we have different facilities, which we call at this point projects. Uh, next page, please. Where are we on their, uh, URA execution? We're still on phase one. Uh, we have two columns for you to look at. The first column is a contract execution status on projects that were approved back on July by ca- uh, mayor and council. On the right side, we have the forecasted project timelines for each of the projects. It is my understanding that as this afternoon, we have ninety-five percent of contracts executed. So the dates forecasted on the timelines are, uh, very accurate. Uh, we will do everything possible, uh, to ensure that our contractors and vendors comply with the forecasted schedule. Next page, please. Uh, it is about, when you look at the, uh, last row on the presentation, it's about four point seven million dollars that will be under execution on phase one. Uh, next page, please. On this page, we wanted to display, uh, pictures of current conditions, so you can see it. The reasons why some, uh, facilities are in, in better conditions or worse conditions. We wanted to display for our community, for our residents, as well as for you all, to see what do we have on the roofs and what, what, what are the reasons why we're, we, why we recommend a replacement or updates of some of the parts of our facilities. In this case, we have displayed the conditions of, on Walk Mall, the roofing conditions, uh, those are self-explanatory. I would like to proceed with the next page. We have the Sandtown Gym, uh, same thing, the, uh, full replacement of the roofs, uh, the conditions on, on the parapet walls, uh, the a- asphalt conditions, the siding conditions and so on. Next page, please. On fire stations, as you are aware of, we have multiple issues with gener- generators. We have issues at the kitchens, cabinets that are not appropriate for our current facilities, as well as, uh, the siding, uh, conditions of some of the, of the walls, some parapets along the, uh, our fire stations. Next page, please. Uh, at Walker Sommel Park, we have a concession stands. You can see it, the conditions of the roofing, the ceiling and so on. Next page, please. At Creole Park, same thing, that we have the, um, the pavilion roof being damaged. Uh, the trim roofing at Old National Park, similar situations, the doors, the concession stand roofing and so on. At Clifton Dell, Fulton Art Center, we have major issues at that location, uh, that center. We're going to, uh, design analysis, and after, uh, forecasted and better, uh, and, uh, design received by our consultants, we will be going into a different type of facility for the South Fulton Art Center. Next page, please. Um, a few pictures just to see, uh, on what are the improvements that are already done at some of the, uh, URA, uh, facilities. Uh, we have the, uh, uh, the South Fulton Tennis Center, uh, before pictures and after pictures, as well as Fire Station Four, where we replaced the HPSE system, the inside and outside pictures. Next page, please. Uh, as well as the Chemo Crow Park, you can see it, what we have before, what I've replaced, what we have installed. You can see the pavilion, you can see the, uh, the other areas at the long, the long park as well, where we replaced the, uh, the fence. Next page, please. Um, this is my summary, it is on what, uh, council approved earlier, and how it, it is, uh, it was diverse throughout the different departments in the city. So we have sixteen point three, uh, four million dollars in grand total. Add those, you can see by itself how much has been allocated for projects within parks, fire, transportation, general services for land acquisition, police and so on. When you do your sum, you can, it comes back out to sixteen point three four million dollars. Next page, please. Um, it is very important to look at this table and to acknowledge, uh, what our earlier consultants did when they assessed all our facilities for the thirteen URAs. Under the initial, uh, recommendation, they have recommended that we have about fifty-seven million dollars, uh, comprehensive deficiencies that was recommended within the next ten years. Uh, we have a thirty-four million dollars of those that were immediate needs in the next five years. As you can see, those thirty-four million dollars, we're only using about ten point three million dollars for facilities. When you, uh, see the recommendations out, out there, that goes district by district, you can see it, how much was initially forecasted, what are actual expenses, and how much are we, uh, uh, executing on based on the funds that are available these days. Next page, please. Uh, this follows the same criteria, thirty-four million dollars needs in the next five years. Uh, that goes against nine point five million dollars, and we have done our best to fit the EMEA needs, which are safety needs for, uh, to all those facilities within the thirteen URAs. Next page, please. Uh, the phase two, uh, we're working very diligently to come back and present to you, uh, uh, a second phase of implementation, uh, that will be about, you know, forty, four, four point five million dollars. Within those, we're still on, in the process of assessing more of our facilities, and, and we should be coming back to you with our recommendation for approvals, uh, in the winter of this year, as well as we're working with, uh, with parks, uh, with, uh, fire to hopefully acquire, uh, la- uh, land for, uh, on, on the District Two for a new fire station. Uh, we have in District Five, uh, for all built, all, all built called Cook Park, a land acquisition, as well as for, uh, District Seven, the Auckland Shell area, for, I know, part of land acquisition. Uh, next page, please. With that, uh, Mayor Pro Tem Willis, um, I, I'm here to respond to any questions that, uh, you or the council may have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Valenzuela. Um, I don't have anyone in the queue. Does anyone have any questions? I, I am asking again, does anyone have any questions for Mr. Valenzuela? I don't see anyone in the queue.
Yes, I have a question. I, I am having trouble with my computer as well.
Okay. Councilmember Khalid?
Um, Mr. Valenzuela, we, we've, we had this, uh, really great program at Creole Park, Future Seekers, and, um, you know, we were teaching kids robotics and entrepreneurship. And we weren't able to have them come back in person this year, although we had dozens of families sign up, because Creole Park has some HVAC issues. Is that addressed anywhere in this URA? I see something about a bathroom.
Uh, Mr. Khalid, to address your question, yes, it is under phase one, and the HB, uh, X system will be addressed, uh, with this, uh, uh, implementation on phase one.
All right, and you have a, uh, is there like an estimated completion date for that? And could you tell me that is in this, could, could we maybe just scroll back to the slide, cuz I didn't see it. I, I, I read through the proposal, I didn't. I saw Creole Park's bathrooms, but not Creole Park's HVAC.
Um, Mr. Adams, could you go, go back to, let's go back to the next page, please? Well, we, I, I think it's the third page of the presentation. All right, uh, I say it right there. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, right there, you have Creole Park building improvements. And in that particular phase, it's an envelope, uh, program that we have. Uh, we have different things that have been awarded. One of them is the HB, uh, HVAC system, as well as we have, uh, some heaters that we're gonna be on the exterior side, we have mechanical rooms. Um, we're replacing, um, three units on the community, uh, building, uh, which are the HPSE systems and all those that are related to, to the system.
Okay, thank you. And then could we, could we go back to the, um, the district by district breakdown?
Okay.
Okay, so, so, so I'm looking at this breakdown, and over sixty percent of the URA is being spent in two council districts.
Uh, yeah, let me explain to you, um, as you know, our consultant has done the assessment to, uh, throughout the thirteen URAs. And, um, some districts have more facilities than others. Subsequently, our consultants were able to recommend and find more deficiencies within- and find more deficiencies within areas where we have more facilities and bigger facilities than others. We would love to be equitable and ensure that the funds have been distributed evenly. But if we'll apply that concept, then we'll have to apply the same thing, perhaps to say that the Sandtown have to be split between other districts or Walk Mall within all other districts. Roofing at Sandtown, it's about to fall, roofing at Walk Mall, it's about to fall. We don't have it nowhere else. That type of facility. With that said, that's how it appears that the, the funding needs have not been distributed evenly. But it was distributed in accordance of safety issues and EMEA needs.
Right, no, I, I, I hear you. So, so what you're saying is that under Fulton County, the majority of the facilities were built in those two districts and those are the oldest and biggest facilities in our city and that is why they're taking the lion's share of the URA money.
Unfortunately, that's how it was done.
Okay.
Yes.
That's fine. I just, I just wanted to make that clear. And I don't, I don't have, I mean, if, if wherever the oldest and biggest facilities are, it makes sense that that's where we're going to spend money because we have all of these degrading facilities. I think it's just also important to note that like under Fulton County, that is where the majority of infrastructure investments were made. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Is there anyone else?
Yes, yes, I have council member Gil Yard in the queue and council member Ral has raised her hand.
Okay, I recognize council member Gil Yard at the time.
Um, thank you. I, I realize that there are a lot of facilities that came over to us in such terrible condition. And I do know that when we first started out in terms of allocating the budget, that we did not have the detail that, you know, for each facility and just how bad it was. But if you've got a nine point five million dollar budget that you're trying to do as much as you can with it, it would seem to me that three hundred thousand dollars is a small amount of money and that we would want to make sure that every last it's something. Three hundred thousand was cut in a park where there is absolutely nothing. And it is just, to me, with a budget of a hundred and twenty-four million dollars, even if it isn't even URA funds that you can't find three hundred thousand dollars until 2024. That is unacceptable. And we would never, ever, Mr. Valenzuela, be able to allocate the funds equitably, which means that everyone would probably get, you know, like a seventh of the money. But still, there is a real big equity question when you leave one district with absolutely nothing. And that came up last night during a meeting as if nothing is being done to try and get funds for that. And I've been talking about it for a long time. So I hope the public is listening so they know that it's not because I'm not pushing.
Councilmember Gil Yard, are you finished with your comments? Did you have a question or were you just?
No, no, I said, thank you. That, that's my closeout.
Okay, thank you. I would like to recognize councilmember Ral next.
Mr. Valenzuela, thank you for your presentation. I think it, it gives the public a glimpse into the challenges we face and trying to do a lot with a little. As Jacob's assessment says, we have about thirty-four million dollars in immediate deficiencies. And we have expenditures about nine point five million. As we heard the presentation from GMA, I would hope we would be looking at possibly leveraging as we get more guidance and I'm understanding that they're not finalized, that we would be looking at the city manager and the public works director looking to see how we can put a bigger dent in some of these deficiencies in the facilities. Is that, and, and I hope it's a top priority. So I guess it's more of a comment and a question for our city manager, if this is something that they're, you're beginning to look at from that standpoint.
Yes, ma'am. We, we do have some government operations and services type funds that we're looking at allocating some money and making a recommendation to you about. Again, as Mr. Terrell Jacob shared with you and as you just said, I mean, things are changing. So the recommendations that you will be hearing from me later during my city manager's report. I mean, they're fluid, they can be changed. We can allocate resources to other areas if we feel that there is a need to. So I will have a presentation to you and the, the council members during my report.
And, and just a follow-up question, Ms. Jones. Isn't that correct that you indicated via memo to all of us that there is money going to be, that you recommend money for Cedar Grove next, for next fiscal year?
Yes, ma'am. Fiscal year 2024.
Okay.
Twenty twenty-four, this is twenty twenty-one.
It's twenty twenty-three. It's tw- fiscal year.
Ms. Sally Jones, if councilmember Gil Yard wishes to speak, she needs to go back in the queue. The person who has the floor at this time is councilmember Ral.
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify that. I was just clarifying that because I do, I think the council and the staff clearly understand some of the challenges of trying to spread this money and I just wanted the public to know that there is a recommendation to, to earmark money for that park and there is money even on this slide showing, even though it's ideally not what you would want, there is money allocated for every area. So there is a facility that's getting nothing.
Thank you. Council, I mean, Mrs. Sally Jones, can you please go ahead and you were, you were making a point?
Yes, ma'am. Yes. I was correct, I wanna correct the statement that was made, the Cedar Grove Park, there is money in the capital improvement budget for fiscal year 2023. The reason why we pushed it out one year, our new fiscal year starts October first, which is in a few weeks, that's fiscal year 2022. In a year from there, it's gonna be fiscal year 2023. The reason why we pushed it out one year was because we wanted an opportunity to assess the park to see what is actually needed there. We don't want to just put a, a number, three hundred thousand dollars and then we find out that we need more money for that park. And yes, we did earmark three hundred thousand as requested by councilmember Gil Yard. But we have a Parks Master Plan that we need to complete. We also, again, we, we need to have our new director have an opportunity to look at that park. I would also even recommend that we do some public input meetings so that we will know specifically what the people who use that park want to see. So instead of throwing money away, I think we need to be very strategic about how we plan to use three hundred thousand dollars or more at a park that, you know, councilmember Gil Yard has identified, you know, needs to have some improvements. And I, I've seen the part and I would not, I can't agree with her more. But I do wanna be strategic about how we use the money.
Thank you, Ms. Sally Jones. In the queue, we have councilmember Khalid and councilmember Khalid, this is your second time, so this will be your last time. And Mr. Adams, do we have the clock? We also have councilmember Gil Yard in the queue, I mean, in the queue. So that will be your second time. It's Gil Yard, I will recognize you after councilmember Khalid talk and that will be your second time. And Mr. Adams, do you have the clock going for the speaker? Cause I can't see that.
Yes.
Maybe because the presentation is. Okay, so let's make sure that we are adhering to the time. I recognize councilmember Khalid. Next, councilmember Gil Yard. And if there's no one else in the queue, I will close out. Thank you.
Um.
Councilmember.
Yes, you, you can, can you all hear me? The capital, uh, the, the capital budget, I've, I've been hearing a lot about that. Where exactly, Ms. Sally Jones, can we find that?
We provided you information on the capital budget during the department head presentations. We also included a draft to you when we sent out the budget book. But we are in the process of continuing to finalize our budget book and we can send that out to you again. That's, that's no problem.
Just to be clear, I guess the, the, the capital budget, it's, is part of the budget book? Is it a separate budget? Is it a separate fund like the URA? Like where does that money actually sit?
Yeah, it is in the, it's a, it's a separate fund, the capital improvement fund. And Rachel, please jump in if I'm, if I'm incorrect, but that is a part of the budget. And normally cities, when we approve a budget, we improve the CIP as a part of the full fiscal year budget.
Ms. Bembry, did you wanna add anything to that? Okay, so the in the, in the budget book, there will be a page or a set of pages that talk about capital improvement projects that are not included in the twenty twenty-two budget.
But that's correct. The capital improvement is normally done over a five-year period. So you will see items that go from twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, and I believe twenty-six.
And Mr. Khalid, I, I want us to divert from the topic at hand. We are discussing the URA. I know we are going to, Ms. Bembry has a presentation and she will be going over the finances and the budget. So we could kind of leave those budgetary questions to that section. And let's finish up this discussion regarding the URA. I think that we could more efficiently.
That's fine. Thank you.
Do you have any other questions regarding the URA?
No, I'm fine. Thank you.
Thank you. I, I would like to recognize councilmember Gil Yard at this time.
I wanna bring some clarity to the issue about the park. First of all, we had, and we still might, I don't know. But we had a Parks Committee composed of community and, and park staff working together in terms of what would be needed in the parks and everybody had an appointment on that committee. And so when the URA came about, there was a list of items that came from that committee that was included in the URA and funding was attached to it. I didn't ask for X amount of money. The funding was for all of us. The funding was just attached to it. And so in two thousand, in two thousand, it was part of a seven million dollar budget and since that time, the budget has changed and we've gotten to the point of the facilities being assessed in terms of need and all of that. So I just wanna make it really, really clear that A, the community had input in terms of what they wanted. B, funding was allocated for it. And C, the funding was cut. And now, two years later, it has to be studied, it has to go back through this, that and the other. While the community that is close by with no amenities have nowhere to go in their community and they're upset about it and I don't blame them. I would be upset as well. So I just wanna make that really, really clear. Thank you. I concluded.
Okay, so I, I, I don't see anyone else in the queue and I have a, a few questions and then we're gonna move on to the next item. Number one, as Mrs. Sally Jones stated, we are under, we have a park master plan underway that not only addresses how we enhance our entire park system, but how we should proceed with the available green space in our city. And to allocate money arbitrarily to any district without having a plan just, just doesn't, you know, give us, it's not using funds efficiently or taxpayers' money efficiently. And so we do have a Parks, a Parks Master Plan that's gonna come back, that's gonna make recommendations to this council. The Park Master Plan was inclusive of community input. And so I look forward along with my colleagues to get that information. Ms. Sally Jones, do you know when that information will be coming back to this council?
I do not have a, can you hear me? I do not have a timeline at this time. I know that we have been in contact with Mr. Perez, who is our consultant doing our Parks Master Plan. I will provide a timeline to you, if you'll mind, that tomorrow. I should be able to get an updated timeline on where we are with the Parks Master Plan.
Yes, that would be greatly appreciated because we have, we've been working on this Park Master Plan close to a year now. And so, you know, you, you're hearing all of the, the needs around park and recreation in the city. So I mean, the community is very anxious and some of my colleagues are too. The second thing is we have had a retreat regarding the URA. We have had meetings regarding the URA. You know, we inherited most of, sixty percent of the funding is going to areas with the most facilities because that's what this city inherited. When the county turned these facilities over to us, most of our facilities and our fields were in disrepair. Once there was legislation going through the General Assembly that we were going to create a city, the county stopped investing in capital improvements because it was not going to be their responsibility anymore. And so now that we are, we have inherited these buildings and these fields that are disrepair, the onus is on us to get them back into repair. When people use our facilities, they're not thinking about district. They're not thinking about, oh, this is in District Three. They're thinking about, this is our city. You know, everybody uses Walk Mall Park. Everyone uses Tremel Crowe. Everyone uses Sandtown Park. And so when we are, you know, talking about allocating funds, I mean, I think our residents would be most appreciative if we fix what we have and then look to enhance what we don't have. So thank you, Mr. Venezuela, for your presentation, your explanation. No one is being unfair. No one is not, is slighting anyone's district. We're all one, we're all one city. It's important that we all have amenities, parks, walking trails, facilities in all of our districts, but it's gonna take time to get there. We didn't create the city overnight and it's not going, and, and, and to get things in the city is not gonna happen overnight. And we have more needs than we do money. So we do have to prioritize and, and be strategic as Ms. Sally Jones stated. Thank you for all that you were doing, Mr. Venezuela and Ms. Sally Jones, and we look forward to hearing from you about the master plan and the recommendation for the second part of the URA. Mr. Adams, will you please sign the next item on the agenda?
Excuse me. Yes, the next item is item three. It's the City of South Fulton's 2021 Comprehensive Plan Update. This presentation will be provided by Jared Lombard with the Atlanta Regional Commission.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Jared Lombard with the Atlanta Regional Commission. Thank you for having me present today and we're wrapping up our Comprehensive Plan Update. And if you can, go to the next slide. This process is really to help you, you kind of, what we were just talking about in the previous two presentations is really to help you prioritize and set some goals for the city. We, you know, had a lot of community input. We've developed some goals for the Comprehensive Plan and we've come up with some recommended, recommended implementation and strategy items as well. I also wanna note that, thank you for all your input throughout this whole process and go to the next slide, please. um, go to the next slide, please. Um, our process that we, you know, conducted over the last few months was really, we listened to the community and um, really asked them what are the challenges that they're facing and what that makes them proud to live in the city of South Fulton. We use that to establish some goals and then developed um, some action items and projects. Next slide. One of the things we also looked at was a lot of data information, and I really, this one slide really describes a lot about a lot of just interesting things about the city of South Fulton. Um, about half of the whole, every house in City of South Fulton was built between two thousand and two thousand nine, approximately half of the housing stock was built. Um, since two thousand nine, only about three thousand houses were built compared to the previous decade where over fifteen thousand houses were built. Next slide. And then if you look at this at a, on a map level, the areas that are in orange and purple, those are where all the new construction in the city have been built as well. Next slide. We also looked at and conducted what's called a SWOT analysis, a strengths, weakness, opportunities, and threats. And I'm not going to go through all of these, but for um, the strength, you you do have a new city and staff, and you're doing some more focused funding um, in the city of South Fulton, and you have some really natural beauty in the area, including the Chattahoochee River. Um, weakness, you, we were just talking about this outdated and stressed infrastructure and that need for reinvestment. Next slide. Um, your opportunities, you have some new tools like the U R A or the TADs. You also, you know, now have Fulton Industrial in your area, and you have this up, really good opportunity to create a sense of place and identity for the city of South Fulton. Um, threats, we've heard this throughout the whole process, um, how neighbor, neighboring jurisdictions, land use changes and development um, patterns really are impacting your community. Next slide. So I just wanted to do some brief so um, summary about the engagement process. So next slide. Um, we developed a project website. We had over thirty-seven hundred page views. Um, of that, two hundred fifty-five people participated in the questions, and they gave us three thousand seven hundred and forty-five responses. Um, two hundred and sixty-three comments, but also six hundred and thirty-seven people subscribed for more information, and that was um, we've ha- were able to collect that, and all of the comments and responses will be in the appendix of the comprehensive plan document. Next slide. Um, this, we got a really good distribution throughout the city of South Fulton, and this, the little blue dots are representatives of where people live in the community. Next slide. We also asked some people what, we asked them what they would prefer for developments in certain areas in the community. So this is the Old National area. These both scored that they, people prefer this um, uh, over eighty-seven percent for both of these images. Um, want to go to the next slide? Um, this is what they would not prefer to see in Old National, um, that high-rise or a large big box type development. Next slide. We asked similar conversations, uh, we did a similar um ac- activity for the Red Oak area, and these are the two top images. Um, and then the next slide, please. And these were actually, um, interesting, were the two um, that were not preferred. One, that was very much that, you know, commercial oriented um, development, but then also that bake shop that's um, in Serenby, as you see. Next slide. Uh, we asked people about the two housing preferences, and these are the two highest scoring ones. Um, very different. One is that we, we all brick, but also they're both made out of brick, but one is um, very much that contemporary feel, while the other one is a newer um, develop, development as well. Um, next slide. So we took all that information and met with, also with y'all um, on the city council and to really update what the future development and future land use map of the city. This is, provides guidance on what would be appropriate development styles and patterns um, and densities throughout the city. It is not the zoning ordinance or zoning overlays as well. Um, next slide. So this is um, the sample map, and it's kind of hard to see at the, on a PowerPoint slide. In the um, report, there's actually a link to go to an interactive map, but we'll also zoom in and kind of talk about some of these areas. Nine different categories throughout the city, um, going from agriculture neighborhood, which is the lowest density um, in the city, all the way up to what we call that suburban two neighborhood, which is um, and that orange color, which is that highest residential density. We also have three mixed-use areas, going from Village Live Work, which is the smallest area, up to um, that regional live work, which is um, a much higher density um, area with more activity. Um, next slide. Um, we also looked at and tried to incorporate the economic development focus areas into these different um, mixed-use nodes as well. Next slide. To kind of zoom in ro- um, quickly here, um, the Camp Creek Parkway area where the town center is being planned that is identified as a regional live-work node with um, a little bit of uh, community live-work. Also, some of the, the live-work node, or the node off of economic development focus area off of Cascade Palmetto is also identified as a commercial live-work node. And you can see how um, the industrial area in Fulton Industrial is now incorporated into the city's plan as well. Uh, next slide. We also looked at um, the Old National Corridor. That is now a regional live-work corridor. And going forward over the next year, working on the um, Old National L C I Plan Update, you'll get a more detailed master plan of what all the future of Old National could be. We're also looking, um, made Red Oak into a mixture of both regional live-work and community live-work um, area as well. And then that's image is a sample of what a regional live-work development style would be. Next slide. And um, over in the um, western part of the city, you can see the majority of the city in this area would be either agriculture neighborhood or rural neighborhood. Um, and you can see that um, we also identified now village live-work areas in that uh, light steel blue color um, at certain key um, major intersections, and this will really build on the Campbellton um, plan that was recently completed earlier this year. Uh, next slide. So, you know, we have, you know, a lot of data information. We gathered a lot of public input, but really what we're trying to move into some goals and implementation. If you can go to the next slide, please. Um, we've came up with three types of implementation actions, strategies, programs, and projects. And if you want to, and they're organized in a little bit a different way instead of being that traditional land use, housing, economic development. We really try to incorporate these into the two, under the two main goals. Um, next slide. And you can see that we had two goals, building an equitable South Fulton and making South Fulton a great place. The strategies are lis- uh, within each of the those goals, and then we have implementation actions for both. Um, if you can go to the next slide. I'm not going to go all the different um, implementation actions that will be in the final plan um, with a schedule and estimated cost, but we are looking at, you know, developing farmers markets, um, doing a housing inventory, um, developing a community engagement playbook, um, creating a brownfield and grayfield program, um, and looking at um, business incubator space in the city. Um, next slide. Um, and for making South Fulton a great place, we're also looking at developing industrial development design guidelines. Um, also creating um, new overlays for key areas in the city along major corridors as well as looking at the existing overlays um, um, in certain parts of the city, and also creating an impact fee program. Uh, next slide. And I want, just kind of want to end on the impact fee program because it's been brought up a lot. Um, impact fees are a tool to help respond to the impacts of new development within the city of South Fulton. And they can only be used for capital projects to help respond to that new development. Um, and then th- those are the list of eligible projects. And the next slide. And to do that, you have to do a first, an impact fee study, and that will look at the existing levels of service, determine different service areas, identify future needs, and then develop a fee schedule. Um, next slide. Um, so our next steps, um, and the end, um, at the end of this month, you'll be submitting the plan for state review after a public hearing. Um, we will also be opening up and posting the plan for public comments, and then adopt um, hopefully within, at the end of October, and then implement the plan over the next five years. Um, with that, um, Mayor Protem, I will be happy to take any questions or comments that you all may have.
Okay, at this time, I don't see anyone in the queue. I don't see anyone raising their hand. Anyone, yes?
Yes, I do have one person in the queue, Councilmember Khalid.
Okay. And I would ask before I recognize my Khalid, if you have questions or comments, please, at this time, go in the queue or raise your hand um, under reactions. If you're having problems uh, in the queue, go ahead and raise your hands in the reactions.
Oh, no, no, I I'm I'm in the queue.
No, that's not what I said. I was telling everyone, all of, all of my colleagues, if they have any questions or comments, to go ahead and go in the queue. Before I recognize you, I asked everyone to do that. You may be recognized, um, Councilmember Khalid at this time.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Uh, Jared, I'm sorry. What is, what is your, Mr. Lombard, what is? Can you talk about the demographics of the uh, people who have participated in the comp plan? Like, how many participants did we have? What was the median age? Do you have any charts about the age distribution?
Um, off the top my, um, it, a variety of ages. I do have that. Um, it will be in the appendix. Um, I could, if I can send the, or you can provide that information um, after the meeting. Um, I don't have that readily available in front of me.
All right, I I I it would, it would be, it's, I think it's critical to have when we, when we present findings of data, that is, it's important to have the entire data set. And, and, and my, so I'll just, I'll, 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 I'll save my comments until we have a full data set. I don't, I don't think that we have all of that information. Thank you.
Next, thank you. Uh, uh, I see uh, Councilmember Gomes. Following Councilmember Gomes, we have Councilmember Reeves. Following Councilmember Reeves, we have Councilmember Rao. Um, at this time, I would like to recognize Councilmember Gomes.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Willis. Uh, my question is for Mr. Lombard. Again, thank you for your presentation. Um, I know a majority of District Two, we have uh, in the interior or very close to the residential, we have lowered the density um, quite a bit and then increasing in the nose, but if there are still additional changes, um, are we able to make those changes?
Uh, yes, you can make any changes to the plan up to the date of adoption. Yes.
Okay, and can you give me those dates again? When is the last date for uh, input?
Um, we're asking, um, I was working with Shayla um, earlier today about finalizing that final schedule. I believe we'll be posting the plan um, sometime this week and then be asking for comments. Um, um, hopefully in, in October, we'll be asking for final comments by October.
So from this point right now, going to our public, uh, to the residents, and they are getting to weigh in?
Yes.
Okay, and what, and what is the, um, I guess, the mode of communication that you'll be using to get out to the, get this information out to the residents for their participation?
Um, we'll be posting it to that public input site and then also be relying on the city to share it through their appropriate um, channels. And I'll defer to the city staff as well.
Okay, and then once you get the residents' input, you will bring it back to the council as this is what we have decided, or?
Uh, that is correct.
Okay, all right. Thank you so much. I am finished with my comments, Mayor Protem.
Next, I would like to recognize Councilmember Reeves.
Thank you so much, uh, and thank Mr. Lombard for your uh, presentation. Uh, thanks to my colleague, uh, uh, Sister Gomes, uh, you had answered, asked some of the questions that I was asking. Mr. Lombard, let me ask a quick question, though. Um, when we have the regional live-work areas, that's zoned, how does that become an industrial area or an industrial district?
Um, so it is not zoned. It's recommended on the future land use map. So when a rezoning application or a new development comes in, you would then kind of evaluate that based on that future land use map recommendation. So it would, I would say, it would try to per- at least give that vision and idea to future developers of what would the community consider appropriate or not appropriate in that area without the rezoning.
So if the community wishes to have it zoned as a regional live-work or community live-work, then shouldn't any development be geared towards the people want?
That would be, yes, that would be um, appropriate. That would still be a future action that a future council would take to do any rezoning.
Thank you, sir.
At this time, I'd like to recognize Councilmember Rao.
Thank you. Um, I had a question. I know uh, a lot of it, uh, presentation focused kind of on the main corridors. And um, for, for the northern part of the city, District One primarily, there wasn't a lot of conversation uh, or or slides, and I know you had to make it brief, but um, in terms of the, the maps, are they readily available for the area?
Uh, ye- yes, there is. Um, in the final plan, there's actually a link that will be an interactive map, so you can zoom all the way to your parcel. Um, or house to see, but um, in the, I would say most, there was not a lot of changes um, on that in um, the northern districts. Um, we did make um, that Cascade two eighty-five interchange into at the regional live-work corridor. I apologize if I didn't add that.
Okay. Thank, thank you. That's just more for the benefit of the public, and um, thank you. Good, good presentation.
Um, at this time, I would like to recognize Councilmember Gillyard.
Um, I have a question about, um, the overlays. Um, because I heard you mention the village um, sections that would be somewhere in the comp plan. Um, I don't know, know where. Um, but those of us who have submitted um, um, overlays, I'm just wondering how that's going to fit into the plan. And then um, just answer that question first, please.
Yeah. So the plan itself just recognizes these are important areas and that the community is visioning that these would be village mixed-use areas. What the, their direction in the plan is to recommend to staff to, for the next e- few years, create specific overlays and written zoning overlays for different parts of the commu- um, the city of South Fulton.
Okay, and then my, my second question is, one of the things that, well, there are two things that I really found very um, interesting with the current um, comp plan. And one of them is that it described the, the, it did a good job of describing the area in terms of where the steep slopes are, the environmental issues. Uh, that had a lot to do with what's going on in the environment. And I was hoping that there would be some kind of update, simply because um, all of that relates so much to, to our infrastructure, and we know that we have a lot of infrastructure needs. And so that kind of update was, would have been extremely important. That's number one. And then number two, I think that the other part is that there's an excellent And then number two, I think that the other part is that there's an excellent description of almost every area except Red Oak. Red Oak was not, is not included in the current cop, cop plan. So I do think at some point in, um, in this, um, updated comp plan, that there needs to be some type of discussion about the character of, um, of each area. And, um, I'm sure that the citizens in each area, you know, there's a lot that they might not know. And then we have a historical, a committee that we did not have when the current plan was put together. So I do think that some attention needs to be made, uh, in those two areas.
Um, th- thank you, Council, uh, Member Gil Yard. We did address, uh, some of the, add some of the environmental data back into the current, or the new draft plan that will be released, um, to the public as well. And is, and added information on the historical committee.
Okay, thank you.
I don't see anyone else, um, in the queue. Is, uh, anyone else, uh, in the queue, uh, Mr., before I, uh, make my comments, ask my questions, Mr. Adams?
No, no one else is in the queue or has their hand raised.
Okay, thank you. Um, thank you so much, uh, for this excellent presentation. Can you go back to the slide there, uh, you are, or you are, uh, uh, Pat Resit? Where you are highlighted, the resident input.
Uh, yes.
Ms. Caldwell, can you put that slide back up, please?
And while we're going there, uh, Ms. Sally Jones, um, for the public, the next phase of public comments, uh, the review comments, can you please make sure that staff does not set any meetings that's competing with any of the mayor and council, uh, meetings or community outreach? Because we want to make sure our residents have an opportunity to give input. And that, that can't happen if meetings are being planned, um, and, I mean, if, if multiple meetings are being planned in one day.
Yes, ma'am. We're, we're trying to address and make sure that we don't have any conflict in meetings.
Okay. Uh, no, the, that said the number, that's.
Yeah, it'll be the previous one.
And so residents, uh, you know, we have, uh, according to the census, a hundred and seven thousand residents in the city of South Fulton. And this comprehensive development plan is going to lay out a plan for how we should develop, um, over the next decades. And we only got two hundred and fifty-five participants. Three thousand seven hundred forty-five responses to questions, two hundred and sixty-three comments, and six hundred and thirty-seven subscribers. And we did a mailer to the residents citywide, you know, oh, trying to engage them in this process. And I am just, you know, floored because when you hear a lot of the chatter and see a lot of chatter on social media, it's relative to our development in our city. And when the, when the dirt is moved, that's when it's too late. This is where we need your input. This is where we need you to tell us what you want to see in a city, how you want us to develop our city, and what standards you want in our city. And so I would urge, um, residents, if you see this, if you're listening, that you go ahead and make sure you engage in the next phase, because once it's adopted, I mean, there, I mean, we get an update, but we're, we're stuck with this plan. Um, Mr., um, I have a question. Red Oak Historic District is in my district. And so let me cl- put some clarification in place. There's a lot going on in Red Oak Historic District. We have a main street. We have a Red Oak Historic District plan. Um, the concern that I did have is that Red Oak Historic District never had an overlay. But I see where it is addressed planned, and my question to you is, we didn't know we had to do a study for impact fees. Is it true that we're going to have to do a study or hire additional consultants to update or create overlays? Um, for districts who don't have overlays?
I would, it depends on, um, the complexity of the overlay. It could be either staff-led or it could be, um, consultant, but that would be depending on the project scope for each overlay. And I'll defer to city staff, um, on that.
Thank you, Jared. We were actually preparing, as far as staff, to prepare that, um, file for the council member.
Okay, so staff is preparing an overlay for Red Oak?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct. We'll be meeting with you first before we begin that project. But we'll be speaking with you to learn of the direction you're wanting for that area, and then from there, we'll be preparing to have that file ready for you.
Okay, hey, do you have any idea, um, what that timeline looks like? Would it be this year or next year?
Um, so we, of course, are waiting on the adoption of this file, so it'll be October. Um, we have, um, in the plan for it to carry out over the course of the next five years, but we will definitely not take that amount of time for us. We'll push to have it in this fiscal as soon as possible, because I'm aware that you were pushing to have this soon. So I will, in fact, ensure that it happens sooner than later.
Okay, thank you. I really would appreciate that. Uh, Ms. Sally Jones, I mean, I know that we want to get this plan adopted by October or, or Ms., Ms. Reed, is that correct? We want to get this plan, but do we have a deadline?
The state requires that we have it adopted by October thirty-first.
Okay, so we will not have time to send out another. I'm, I'm comfortable, did send out a mailer. Again, citywide, and, um, encouraging all residents to engage in this process. It's unfortunate we did not get more participation, but I am confident, um, I'm comfortable with the fact that we did everything in our possible to make an attempt to engage residents. Um, I would like to, um, ask that, again, that we do not have any competing meetings for this. And that, uh, all of my colleagues do whatever we can to make sure that information is sent out, um, so that we can engage residents in the second phase. Um, I will recognize at this, um, uh, Mr. Reeves, this is your second time, so I will recognize you at this time.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. Uh, Ms. Reed, Director Reed, what, I have a couple of questions here. What is the date of submission that is going to the state? It no has to be, uh, council adopted by October the thirty-first, but what is the date of submission, um, to the state?
Mm-hmm. Jared mentioned that he'll be submitting that out by the end of this month. We'll have a public hearing coming up, um, this month, on the twenty-eighth. We'll ask for the public to, um, weigh in on the comments as far as, um, reviewing the file that he just mentioned that he's completed. We'll have it on the website. We'll work with communications to get the information out, receive comments back from the public, and have a public hearing on the twenty-eighth. Once that public hearing is held, Jared will then transfer it over to the state for their review. That usually takes, and Jared correct when we're wrong, usually take roughly close to less than thirty days. But they'll, you know, expedite to get it done as soon as possible to allow for us to put it on our calendar for the end of the month. So we have a council meeting, if I'm not mistaken, on the twenty-sixth of October, that could allow for us to have the adoption by the deadline of that following week.
Yes, and, um, we also can still make adjustments after it is submitted to the state for their review. That the state just reviews it to make sure it meets all the required state, um, planning elements.
And so it can be corrected even after that. Thank you, uh, for that. Uh, I really appreciate it. And I, I do share my sentiments, as this is, uh, uh, that Councilmember, uh, Willis has stated. To, uh, anybody in District Five, please, let's get the max participation that you can, because this is where your voice is heard and your voice is implemented, put into the implementation of what be carried out. We can't cry about it later, because the power now far outweighs the regret of yesterday. And this is the moment in time that we have to do it. Thank you. We'll be in touch, and, uh, I'll be in touch with Director Reed and, uh, for recommending this.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Uh, thank you, uh, Councilmember Reeves. Ms. Sally Jones, the twenty-eighth is the first time I've heard of that date. And I know y'all really haven't, um, had a ti- had an opportunity to get this scheduled out. If you can get tho- these dates to the council out as soon as possible, that would be greatly appreciated. So we can make sure that we don't, um, schedule any competing events on those dates.
Yes, ma'am.
And that's, and that's including any debate forums too, correct?
Um, Councilmember Reeves, uh, politics has nothing to do with city business.
I'm just stating.
Uh, I understand. I just don't want us to, I, I was just trying to, um, tell Ms. Sally Jones to get the information to us, so as council members, we don't schedule any community outreach. Um, you know, having competing community outreach. Yes, that's what I was trying to say.
I got you.
Okay. Hey, I don't see anybody else in the queue, so I'm gonna ask that we move on to the next item.
Yes, thank you. That completes the presentations for the, today's meeting. The next item on the agenda is item four, uh, the monthly reports. The first monthly report will be the finance monthly report by Rachel Bembry, who serves as the interim finance director.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. It's my pleasure to present the financial report for July thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one. Uh, next slide, thank you. Beginning with the main operating fund of the city, the general fund, uh, we're pacing a bit ahead of, uh, budget revenues in most all categories by approximately one point one million overall. This is primarily attributable to greater than expected revenues in motor vehicles, franchise fees, and traffic camera revenue, which is under charges for services. And, uh, this is offset, uh, by less than expected, uh, tax collections and a reduction in revenue from the IGA with Fulton County. Next slide, please. Looking at the summary of expenditures for the general fund, we see we are pacing, uh, below anticipated levels. Uh, this is the result of a couple of things. Um, we have attrition from work first turnover as well as some insurance expenditures, uh, that are not booked yet, and will increase the personnel line items, as well as some inter-fund transfers that are often booked at the end of the, um, next slide, please. This, uh, slide re- reflects, uh, your year-to-date property tax revenues as compared to prior year. Next slide. Um, your loss revenues are pacing better than anticipated, uh, and better than in the prior year. Um, in fact, uh, we have surpassed the two thousand nineteen collection levels in, in the past two months. Next slide. Uh, your year-to-date T-S loss revenues are gradually increasing, um, but still not to anticipated levels for fiscal year twenty-one. So we'll continue to, to monitor those closely. Next slide, please. Um, again, this is your departmental expenditures, just presented in a, in a different form. Uh, this is presented in a chart, uh, for comparison to the fiscal year twenty-one amended budget. My next slide. This one, um, presents the total general fund expenditures by object classification, uh, which is personnel versus operational expenditures. Again, you can see, um, what I pointed out earlier, that most of the savings are in the personnel classification. Uh, and this is due to the few things I mentioned, uh, earlier in the presentation. Next slide, please. Uh, this is your summary of revenues and expenditures for all of your funds. The next slide. Um, again, your cash balances, uh, for each of your cash accounts. This is, uh, information that has been, uh, requested to be presented. And our final slide is our confiscated assets report showing the balance and confiscated funds available and, um, the inflows and outflows of these, uh, year-to-date activity. Um, so with that, I thank you and welcome any questions.
Madam Mayor Protem, at this time, we do not have anyone in the queue. I, I have raised my hand, Mr. Adams. I thought it, yeah. Madam Mayor Protem?
At this time, I would like to recognize Councilmember Reeves.
Thank you so much. Ms. Bembry, thank you for your presentation there and, uh, for the transparency of the accounts. Now, when it comes to our budgets as of council, um, would you say it'd be fair to say, uh, is use it or lose it type of budget?
Um, we, we don't think of the, the budget in terms of use it or lose it. It does fall into fund balance as all the other departments do, uh, if it's not utilized. So it will fall into reserves for, for future use.
So, okay, so if there's, uh, monthly restrictions, uh, could those be lifted, uh, in the last couple of days to ensure that you meet the deadline of finance to, uh, expend your account?
Um, no, that deadline would have already passed, uh, at this time. Uh, we definitely send out those communications and ensure that we have enough time to, to officially and properly close out, uh, the fiscal year, and that's what we'll be, be doing, uh, from this point moving forward.
That's what the PO, but what about the card usage? Is that, uh, still got a day left?
Um, tomorrow is the day that those cards will be cut off.
Correct. So if you have some still budget line items and the budget restrictions, like, which is five thousand dollars a month? Could we open that up to the expend all of the current year, year's budget invoices?
Um, I, I think that this would be best discussed, um, between myself and the purchasing, um, director as well as yourself, um, to determine the best course of action for these items.
Thank you.
Um, next, I would like to recognize Khalid, Councilmember Khalid.
Thank you. Ms. Bembry, um, could you go back to this slide with the personnel? Uh, it's page ninety-nine in, 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 in our book, the personnel to operations.
Continue. This slide.
Yeah, keep going, that's a bar graph.
This slide eight.
There it is. Um, so for, for me, I, I will be transparent. This is my first time being a councilperson in the city. So what I, what I know about what is normal is what I've experienced here in South Fulton. Is this a normal proportion of personnel to operations in, in other cities that you have seen?
Um, I will, uh, I would like to do a comparison specifically to, um, comparable cities to the city of South Fulton. I don't find it alarming, um, um, at, um, my observation now. But, uh, city of South Fulton, uh, will have other, uh, peer cities, so to speak. Um, where we can do a comparison to ensure that, um, we're in line with, with others. But, um, uh, from my financial perspective and the experience that I have, uh, it is reasonable to me.
Okay, I would, I would love to see, um, I would love to see that, like, just if, if we could, I, I mean, I don't want to give you more work to do, but giving you more work to do. I would love it to see a comparison of not only this, uh, uh, with peer cities, of not only this slide, but could we go back one slide before that as well? Yes, and if, I'm just wondering if the way that we are spending money is comparable to other peer cities. And so I would just, um, the, the, the distribution amongst departments and then the, the personnel to operations.
Well, I can definitely, um, provide those comparisons, and I, I just would like to note, um, just based on the financial expertise in the municipalities, that, um, I think you will see value in the comparison, um, with peer cities in terms of personnel versus op- caution you in terms of a comparison with peer cities on, uh, this, this chart in terms of departmental expenditures. Um, I would just take that comparison assault, um, just because every municipality has different initiatives, focus, strategies, challenges. Um, and so, uh, you know, some cities may have, um, you know, more outdated infrastructures where fire is, is, uh, you know, a higher priority or more, uh, dangerous areas where public safety is a more priority, or, you know, there, there are varying, um, needs in different communities. So I would just caution that, um, you know, the outcomes that they're looking for may be different. And that may be a reason that that comparison might not be a very valid one.
Okay, uh, and, and I hear that es- especially for this slide, uh, more than, more than, thank you.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
At this time, I'd like to recognize council member Baker.
Yes, thanks for recognizing me, I just wanted clarity uh, on the comments of uh, my colleague, council member Reeves, when he asked regarding uh, the deadline. Uh, did I hear correctly that you said that you guys were gonna check? And I guess confer and find out what the best thing to do? How would we know if the deadline is tomorrow about the card being turned off? Like, some of us having events or things of that nature, I know that that's a deadline, but I don't know if you you are gonna make a concession, and if so, how would we know?
Uh, no, sir, I'm not anticipating a a a concession, um, you know, we we do um, have that hard deadline for a reason, and we did actually extend it um, a little further than uh, the deadline from last year uh, to give some kind of extra time to folks. Um, but again, we do set those deadlines for for good reason, and we really need to respect it. Um, and there is, let me be clear, there's a difference between um, that deadline as well, and um, I believe the question was in lift limits, and so I wanted to address that um, in in a separate discussion, um, because that is circumventing controls, and we wouldn't wanna go down that route. So I wanted to get some clarification about the nature of the expenses, uh, expenditures rather, uh, and what the situation is so that I can better advise on, you know, if those purchases can be made tomorrow or not.
I'm clear, I just wanted to know, like, how would we know if that was not the case? Uh, so, thank you for providing the clarity, thank you so much, I'm clear.
I just want to say, um, I I I'm looking, I understand the concerns of my colleagues, but in fairness to Ms. Bembry, um, I was trying to, you know, while you all were asking questions, look up the memo, but she actually sent us notification over a month ago, um, uh, that, I think it was uh, over a month ago. We got it in August, a memo, uh, that told us that we had to have um, uh, our purchase, uh, port, our purchase, uh, our purchase orders completed. Be completed. Uh, can you please mute your phones, please? Um, we had a deadline for when our purchase orders had be in at the off deadline or when we could use our um, uh, purchase cards, and the and the deadline is tomorrow. So would the cards be cut off by close of business tomorrow, Mrs. Bembry?
Um, yes, ma'am.
Okay, so we have up until what time tomorrow to use our purchase cards?
Um, I will coordinate with purchasing staff and send you all um, a specific time.
Okay, thank you, so we did get that information, so if you could go back and look at your emails, um, we got this notification over a month ago. Typically send us this information prior to the budget process as to let us know when we need to have purchase orders in and when we need to have our items completed. And uh, once we approve the budget, then our cards are loaded and um, we typically are able to use them again. Um, and and am I correct, Ms. Bembry?
You're correct.
Okay.
Also, council member Willis, if I can add that actually, it's my understanding purchasing will be issuing brand-new cards.
Okay, I didn't know that, but, okay. Okay, is there a reason why why brand-new cards will be issued?
Yes, Mr. Kerr on the line.
I'll give Mr. Kerr a chance to respond, but if he's not available.
Ms. Bembry, can you just go ahead and respond, and as soon as time, can you go ahead and respond to the question?
Certainly, um, y- yes, there there's a couple of reasons, um, you know, we really wanted to improve and strengthen the controls of the P Card program. One of the ways we've been uh, doing that is uh, cards were previously issued in um, the department's name rather than individual names. Uh, and so we are making a move uh, to issue those cards in the individual names for uh, added accountability uh, and control, as well as making improvements to the cards to include the South Fulton um, uh, emblem logo, so that uh, you know, it's easily identifiable, will reduce on error of uh, accidentally or inadvertently using the card, um, so that's another added control to strengthen the program.
Well, you will be giving us training if it's if it's any changes?
Uh, there won't be any changes that you'll need, other than you'll just pull a different card out.
Okay, all right, that's fine. Um, I would like to, at this time, recommend, I mean, not recommend, um, recognize council member Reeves. Not Reeves, I'm sorry, council member Kalid.
Okay, I will go speak again if you're gonna let me, you know, that's all right, thank you.
Uh, can you please go in the queue? Uh, council member Kalid was in the queue prior to you, so I I wanna recognize council member Kalid at this time.
Thank you, um, wh- while we're on this issue of P Cards and purchasing and closeout and requisitions, I have to say that I I have, I have had just a a pretty frustrating experience, um. Let me say, the money, the money that is in, the money that is in our council accounts is our taxpayer dollars, and I love our, I love our city council budgets, uh, for the simple fact that it is to me, the quickest way to get taxpayers' dollars back to them. They can make a request of their councilperson, I want this, I wanna see this program, I wanna see, you know, this investment in my park or in my community, and it's been very difficult to get taxpayer dollars back to them. I un- I understand this issue of um, of of needing to have financial controls, but I feel like we hired, we we hired, um, we each have legislative specialists, that is their title. But my legislative specialist seems to spend the majority of his time processing expense reports and financial reports and travel reimbursement forms, and track down receipts, and then and then these systems don't talk to each other. We have these outdated system, h- how could we? If it's if it's possible, if it's advisable, even if it's something that we can't do in this budget because we haven't budgeted for it, how can we get the processing of financial paperwork back into the finance department and out of the city council department? Because at at this point, I feel, I almost feel like I need a District Six accountant and a District Six legislative specialist. And I know that there have been some staffing challenges in in our finance department, but I I I I I, there's a question in there, I don't know, could you speak to that? I don't know if other people have experienced that, I feel like they have. Ms. Bembry.
I apologize, I was muted, uh, and didn't realize, um, uh, you know, e- every process is not perfect. We certainly going through and examining the processes as um, time allows, uh, and improving them where we can. Uh, we will certainly, as someone pointed out, be um, working towards a new E R P system, which will uh, definitely um, improve processes along with, um, you know, filling our our staffing positions as well.
Right, if there, if there, I guess my specific recommendation is, so for example, if my, if my legislative specialist is out, I technically can't use the P Card, because I can't charge expenses and approve my expenses, like, one person has to submit, one person has to approve, and in this department of two, when my legislative specialist is out, that can't happen. I can't submit, I can submit requisitions, but then I'm approving my own requisitions. So there is no staff person that can help like, like, when 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 my one staff person, my department of two, when my one person is out, then my my department is just crippled until they come back.
Certainly, and we can address that, um, you know, on a case-by-case basis, if that individual is out, um, you know, it would help to plan on um, for those absences in advance with finance and purchasing, and and we can discuss uh, what options are available um, at that time.
All right, I I, in in our, and I guess I I will leave it here, I know that we have a a a a budget meeting. Wh- what is the current number of people in the finance department now, and what is, what are we budgeting for for next year?
So, the the staffing is remaining relatively similar, we are going down one position, and it's not, the issue is not in the budgeted staffing.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Um, at this time, I would like to recognize council member Reeves.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Ms. Bembry, I'm gonna be very quick, and this is real for the edification of the public. And just for clarity, is that I do follow protocol, I do respect deadlines, and I do understand the policies and procedures as it comes to the usage of card, which is a two-person authentication uh, uh, method that we have, so I have not had a specialist for, I don't know, six, seven months. So I have been operating on my own and with the assistant of staff when they could, and I'm, and I do understand the challenges, and my challenges and their challenges just did not mesh or marry at the time to uh, get this done in adequate time, which was a little bit over a month ago, and uh, cuz we're worse coming up to the budget closeout, and we do know how that can process can be. I do share my sentiments with uh, councilman Kalid, when uh, I do understand that there's a better process coming in the uh, uh, coming up, and I greatly appreciate that. And uh, as we shore some of those things up, particularly like in my case, like, I do not have no assistant, and uh, it is just has been me operating, uh, and I just now getting to the point where uh, I'm bringing in some uh, staff is at with the industry to assist with this very specific need, uh, so that we don't incur this problem again, but I do ask for, and this is why I ask for my extension and things of that nature, because it is just me operating by myself. And uh, staff did assist me all the way up until they could, and uh, so I will like to thank them for that. That's all.
Thank you, sir.
So, um, I don't see anyone else in the queue, and I'm gonna end this by saying, um, you know, I don't wanna discount anything or any issues my colleagues are having, but I have been um, sitting on this council for approaching six years now. And I would say Edmonds, although it's not the most user-friendly system, and we really do need an E R P system, and we are moving in that direction, we're making an investment in that direction, that would make, that would be user, that would be a more user-friendly accounting system. But I have not had these issues, I have not had any issues, um, getting my purchase orders approved. If I have, uh, if Mrs. Little is out, um, I've always been told to go to the C CFO, and the CFO um, have helped me with the approval process, but that have not, that hasn't happened because I've always played accordingly. Um, I have no issues with uh, making sure that you all are mandating and requiring us to have receipts and invoices, because I recall a couple of years ago, when the community did uh, open record requests, um, and they want a full transparency and accountability of our, of their tax dollars as it relates to these purchase cards, they didn't have anything to say about me, because they had every invoice, they had every receipt, they had every reason why I was spending money, and our ultimate responsibility as policymakers is to oversee budgets and create policy. And so, you know, it's imperative that we follow our financial guidelines, because I'm gonna hold our department heads and Ms. Sally Jones responsible for making sure they follow our financial guideline. Even the contractors, I asked Ms. Sally Jones a bunch of questions about uh, specific um, department that I felt like wasn't following financial deadlines, I mean, uh, co- um, following financial guidelines. So, that's a big part of our job, and whatever, whatever protocol y'all need me to follow, uh, I'm gonna make sure I learn it and follow it. I have not had these issues. The uh, Edmonds is not user-friendly, but I use it to, I mean, based on whatever rules you all give me. And so, I would suggest that maybe we put more training uh, forth, but I haven't had any issues getting my purchase orders approved, uh, and getting my invoices processed, and even adhering to the deadline that you gave this council over a month ago, and that is to have purchase orders completed by the uh, by a certain time, and our cards will be cut tomorrow. And not only will I, but be swept and put into the general fund with uh, with remaining money, but so are the other department heads. That is, that's what we, that's what happens every year. Mr. Adams, can we please move to the next item?
Yes, the next item is item five, city attorney monthly report, uh, city attorney Vincent Hyman.
Uh, good afternoon, uh, Mayor Pro Tem and Council, I have nothing to report at this time.
Okay, do you have any items that you would like to share with us in executive session? Um, we had a lot of um, litigation discussion, um, going back and forth last week, do you have any update to that information?
I uh, and I've, I was going to, uh, well, Ms. Jones was gonna have real estate matters, but I I can uh, discuss real estate matters in executive session, but not necessarily litigation.
Okay. All right. Um, Mr. Adams, please sound the next item on the agenda, I think it's the city manager's report. Mrs. Sally Jones, I think it's for you.
Okay, thank you, um, good evening, uh, Mayor Pro Tem and city council member staff and the public. I realize that it is actually six oh four, and we do have another meeting that we already have um, scheduled for uh, this evening, so I'm gonna make this short. I can also um, discuss this particular information next month as well, as a result of our time. But um, Mr. Jacobs uh, gave you a good overview of the American Rescue Plan, uh, what the do's and don'ts are. But I just wanted to provide to you proposed project plan, and I wanna stress, this is proposed. This is a fluid plan, you will see projects listed, you will see amounts listed. Those amounts can and will very well change if necessary, because as we involve and get public input and some additional input from other entities as recommended, there may be some additional things that we want to do, that we will have to make some adjustments to this proposed plan. So with that said, if you will go to the next slide, please. Um, I won't go through the background, uh, Mr. Jacobs did a good job of doing that. I did wanna stress um, that the city of South Fulton, we are expected to receive eleven point three million dollars. We have already received five point six, that was directly deposited into our city's coffers on May the twenty first of this year, we are expected to receive another five point six in May of twenty twenty two. Um, all of the projects that you will see center around uh, the four project areas that were identified earlier to respond to public health emergencies or its negative economic impact, to respond to workers per- performing essential work during COVID nineteen pandemic, for the provision of government services to the extent of the reduction in revenue due to the due to COVID nineteen, and to make necessary investments in water sewer and broadband infrastructure. Next slide, please. Um, our three specific areas that we want to focus on for our eleven point three million have to do with community recovery, infrastructure improvement, and government operations and services. Um, I I won't go through explaining those at this point, I'll let you take a look at it again, I can discuss this again uh, next month, because as Mr. Jacobs told you, we do have time, and it is important- uh, next month, because as Mr. Jacobs told you, we do have time, and it is important for us to, uh, plan, plan, plan. Next slide. Our projects, next slide. The first one I wanted to highlight, uh, we were looking at trying to propose a citywide food insecurity, um, initiative where we will, uh, look at providing food to households. This particular initiative is really already in existence in South Fulton. This was started last year, um, by, you know, a councilmember, uh, um, and Mayor Protem Willis. I know has been doing this all along, but we want to be able to extend this program, and also to relaunch our Grow Box program, which was we- well-received, uh, during the beginning of the pandemic this year. Uh, we're allocating, uh, two hundred and ten thousand dollars for that purpose. Next slide. Destination, South Fulton Economic Development. Uh, we're looking at providing relief to small businesses in the form of grants. Again, we're already doing this. We want to be able to expand upon that particular program and, uh, to be able to help regain, uh, revenue losses for our businesses here in the city of South Fulton. Next slide. And, uh, also additional information regarding economic development efforts. Our economic strategic plan, uh, makes mention of commercial recovery plan in designated areas. Uh, that is to accept recovery and expansion of businesses that have been impacted by COVID nineteen. Uh, we're looking at two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for that purpose. Again, these are numbers that we allocated initially, but they could very well change. I do want to continue to stress that. Next slide. Um, our rental and mortgage assistance, we're already doing this program. We did it through the CARES Act. Uh, we are continuing to partner with Fulton County, who also has funds for rental and mortgage assistance. Um, we will, you know, want to continue this program. There are a lot of people, as we know, who have been negatively affected uh, as a result of job loss, and so we are proposing to use one point four million, um, as a result, um, to, uh, address rental and mortgage assistance. Next slide. Um, vaccine initiative program. We know that, uh, black and brown communities are are not being vaccinated or have, you know, um, I guess negative, uh, react, or, or negative uh, connotations of what it means to be vaccinated. Um, in order for us to fight this pandemic, we believe this is very important. Um, and listening to, uh, you know, our CDC and, and other entities, we think it's important to be able to do something in our community. Again, this will be citywide, and what we want to do is offer gift cards if people come and get vaccinations. It's my understanding from talking to other entities, if we have the right spokesperson or persons, the right incentives, and the right locations, people, uh, they will come. So we are looking at allocating two hundred and sixty thousand dollars for this purpose. Again, this is one of those numbers that may have to go up, uh, because I think if we, you know, get a good positive response to vaccination incentive programs, and, and this will be for our residents and our city employees. Um, I think we will have to definitely increase that number. Next slide, please. Um, the council outreach, um, as a result of, you know, the decrease in your budgets for this fiscal year, um, because we had already balanced the proposed fiscal year twenty-two budget, we have offered as an alternative to, um, include money in the American Rescue Fund that you can do specific eligible outreach effort, efforts in your districts. And so this seventy thousand dollars will be divided by the seven districts, which will equal ten thousand dollars, uh, per district. And so you will be able to use that to provide relief to residents and businesses impacted as a result of COVID nineteen. Next slide, please. Um, envision South Fulton. This is the South Fulton Development Authority. Um, they have made a request for, uh, use of American Rescue Plan money. Um, I am recommending sixty thousand dollars, which was actually a request that they made for monies to be included in the new fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-two budget, proposed twenty-two budget. Again, we had balanced that budget by the time this particular request came in. So in order for them to assist residents and households and businesses, uh, through economic development efforts, we are recommending a allocation of sixty thousand dollars for South Fulton Development Authority. Next slide, please. Uh, Public Works, um, we, uh, have been issued our MS four municipal separate stormwater system, um, per- permit, and as a result of that, we need to do a master plan so that we will be able to identify, uh, those areas, you know, that have to, uh, have the required city maintenance of stormwater, um, assets. That would be our inlets, our catch basins, our ditches, our detention ponds, our piping. Um, we are recommending a, uh, allocation of, uh, one million dollars for this purpose. Next slide, please. Uh, this particular, uh, amount for the Stormwater Capital Improvement Plan, uh, looking at ways that we will address those issues after we get that master plan, and we are looking at allocating one point seven for that purpose. Again, these are all eligible uses of the American Rescue Plan money as, uh, Mr. Terrell Jacob, Terrell Jacobs, uh, identified for you earlier. Next slide. Information technology broadband. I mean, we, we know that we have some areas within our community, uh, where people do not have internet access. We want to be able to address, uh, broadband capabilities in our city. And so, uh, along with the American Rescue Plan money, we are planning to apply for the National Telecommunications and Information Administration Grant through the state of Georgia. Um, and that will assist us in these efforts. We also want to be able to do, have Wi-Fi capability in our recreation centers. Um, again, these are eligible uses for the American Rescue Plan money. Next slide, please. Uh, human resources, uh, premium pay, that was something that we can use this money for. We did do the Gladiator Play Pay, do it with the CARES Act, and we want to allocate five hundred thousand. We may need more, uh, for this amount or this initiative for, but, uh, we definitely wanted to include something in, uh, the American Rescue Plan for our employees. Uh, the next, next slide, please. This also goes along with, with the previous one. This will allow us to be reimbursed for any regular overtime expenses as a result of our public safety, uh, employees who have, uh, had to work under hazardous conditions as it relates to COVID nineteen. We're looking at eight hundred thousand. Uh, we may have to increase that amount as well, or, or decrease it if we want to do some other things. But, you know, our staff are our greatest resources, and I think it's important for us to, um, acknowledge the good work that they do during these COVID, this COVID nineteen pandemic and to, um, award them accordingly. Next slide, please. Again, uh, we're gonna continue to do improvements to our city facilities. We cannot neglect our facilities as a result of, you know, uh, the COVID nineteen pandemic. We need to, uh, make sure, uh, that, you know, we have adequate controls when it comes to our buildings. And so this is the purpose of allocating six hundred thousand dollars, uh, for us to be able to have, um, access control. You know, particularly too, when it comes to situations where we may have an area where there's been exposure. We need to, you know, lock off that particular building until, uh, it is able to be sanitized. So these are very important efforts, uh, uh, in our workplaces. So we cannot neglect our, uh, facilities. Next slide. Um, the technology infrastructure updates. Again, we need to be able to map out our sewer, uh, mappings through our GIS, uh, staffing and, and programs. And so this is the purpose of allocating two hundred and sixty thousand dollars for that purpose. Next slide. And I know I'm going fast, but I'm trying to be respectful of your time. Uh, the next, uh, item is HVAC improvements. You know, many of our facilities, we may not have upgraded HVAC. And as a result of COVID nineteen, in order to prevent it, we need to address our air infiltration, our ventilation, and our UV lighting, uh, systems in order to, uh, reduce the spread of the COVID nineteen virus. And that's one million dollars. Next slide. Also, we need to continue to purchase, uh, PPEs, you know, sanitizing stations, our temperature checks, disinfecting and doing, you know, deep cleaning of our facilities in order for us to, uh, prevent the spread of the virus amongst our employees. Safety of our employees is very important. So we are allocating a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for that purpose. Next slide. Our revenue loss, um, our, our finance staff have been in constant contact with the Georgia Finance Officers Association and trying to finalize, you know, the best way to calculate our revenue losses. We are looking at right now an estimated revenue loss as a result of COVID nineteen of about five hundred thousand. Again, this number could change, um, so we will continue to do our very best to provide you with, um, the exact amount or in a, in an exact estimate as close as we can as in regards to revenue lost. Next slide. And the last thing, um, American Rescue Plan money allows for administrative costs. Uh, this number is normally about ten percent. As you see, it's a little bit less than ten percent. But again, this is an area, if we need to, um, pay for any, uh, personnel, equipment, auditor fees, consulting fees related to the American Rescue Plan money, this is where we can get that from. And of course, everything we do, it has to be an eligible use of the funds. Um, Mr. Jacobs mentioned to you that we had to do reporting. We are in compliance. We have submitted our initial reporting to the U.S. Treasury. We submitted that information prior to the August thirty-first deadline that was due, and of course, you can depend upon us to make sure that we continue to do proper reporting, uh, as it relates to, uh, the American Rescue Fund money. Next slide. This is just a picture timeline. Again, I'll share it with you, you know, when we received our first allocation, when we're gonna get our second allocation, uh, the, uh, we have to obligate the funds by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. And we have to spend the funds by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. So, um, we do have time, and I will continue to stress, you know, that it's important for us to plan and make sure that we are spending these federal funds wisely. Uh, with that, I will answer any questions that you have. But I did also want to quickly just share with you. I sent you an email regarding the Development Authority. I realize you're just getting it today, and because of time, we'll have to discuss this today. But, uh, as a result of their request, and also as a result of conversations about funding for that particular authority, I would like you to look at that document. And if you have any questions or feedback, if you will let me know as soon as possible. But with that, Mayor Protem, I'll address any questions.
Yes, um, I don't see anyone in the queue. Um, so I do have one question. Um, so we didn't have any allocation for the South Fulton Development Authority in this current budget cycle that is, uh, that we're going through, undergoing this, uh, Ms. Sally Jones?
Not in, not, you mean in fiscal year twenty twenty-one right now?
Yes, yes.
No, ma'am, there is no money for the South Fulton Development Authority.
Okay, so it's a hundred and fifty thousand for the downtown Development Authority.
That is, my understanding was a part of the legislation that created that particular authority, that they are to get a hundred and fifty thousand dollars annually included in the budget until fiscal year twenty twenty-six.
Okay, that's fine. All right, um, I, if there's no other questions, uh, I will like, I will entertain a mo- well, I can make a motion to it. Yes?
Yes, Councilmember Ral has her hand raised.
Councilmember Ral? Thank you. Okay, quick question. As it relates to the, um, and I haven't had a chance to, um, read the document that you forwarded, Ms. Taylor Jones, does that, um, speak to, um, periodic reporting to the body?
It doesn't specifically say that, but, um, myself and the Chair, Councilmember Baker, have discussed that. As a matter of fact, in my, uh, City Managers' Report that was sent out to you and the, the rest of the council, we did include a, a report from them that gave an overview of their board members and some initiatives that they have done, uh, uh, here recently. Uh, but that, I can add that to the IGA if that is the, the desire of the council.
I, I would like to request, you know, whether it be a couple of times a year, quarterly, I don't know. Uh, you and, um, Chairman Baker figure out what, what's appropriate, but I think that would be helpful.
Okay.
Thank you.
Just to follow up to that, Mrs., I would also like to know, I would like a full accounting of the initial two hundred thousand dollar seed money that, uh, that we gave to the South Fulton Development Authority. I would like a full accounting of that money. How much is left, what was spent, and what it was spent on. Um, we have yet to this day gotten any information regarding that.
Okay, I will, I will note, and I can get that to you, but I will note that from the last information that was shared with me from our finance department, out of that two hundred thousand dollars, they have only used, uh, I believe about thirty thousand, so they have about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars left. And it's my understanding, I, because of the COVID, uh, they just, you know, haven't had a chance to do certain initiatives that they had expected to do, but is probably more appropriate, Councilmember Baker, have more with you about that.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to recognize Councilmember Baker. Councilmember Baker?
Yes, thanks for acknowledging me. Uh, I won't go too far into the thick, but I, as I advised, uh, in our last meeting, uh, along with the City Managers' Monthly Report, we will also provide, uh, the, the detailed information and of, uh, the financials of the Development Authority. So she'll have it to share. And of course, it's all of our meetings, um, uh, uh, are live and are public, so the information is public. And we have been using the city's resources to even, um, hold the money, and, you know, we haven't even, the city has always had, uh, had the funds and information. We're just gonna make sure that it's in the City Managers', uh, Monthly Report.
Thank you, Councilmember Baker. Um, uh, Ms. Sally Jones, this IGA has to come before council. Are you planning to bring it?
Sorry, I'm sorry, can you, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yes, I'm sorry, I was, yeah, I wasn't. What I wanted to say is, uh, uh, the bulk of our money, you know, we, we have it, uh, for staff, because our staff has been, uh, helpful in understanding that we didn't know where our next source of income or, uh, funding would come from. So that's why we still have funds, so that money hasn't been, uh, deducted from the amount that you heard from, uh, our city manager.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Baker. So when I've looked at other development authorities, um, Sandy Springs, I've looked at even Fulton County. Um, I've looked at some about, they have their, not only their minutes, they have their budget, uh, they have everything accounted for, so, uh, for.
Madam Mayor, are you on mute?
Okay, I'm sorry. Uh, for both development authorities, I just don't want to, you know, horn in on South Fulton Development Authority. For both development authorities, I want to make sure that, uh, we are adhering to tr- financial transparency and also, uh, when I looked at Fulton County, when I looked at Roswell, when I looked at Sandy Springs, they have their minutes, they have their budget, they have accounting detail of whatever goes on in that Development Authority. And, um, you know, I know that our Development Authority, Authorities are relatively new, but we need that same type of transparency. Um, posted on the website, so anybody is privy to it, so everybody can see what's going on, and so we don't have to have these long detailed discussions about it. Um, not saying anybody, people are being, not being transparent, it's just that we need, we need it to be more transparent so we can see it. Um, Sally Jones, the IGA has to come before the council for us to approve, correct? Are you bringing that to the next council meeting?
Yes, ma'am. Um, if you can just let me know if you. Yes, ma'am. If you can just let me know if you, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, yes, ma'am. That would come before the council for action at the next council meeting. But if you have any other suggestions or questions, please let me know. But I will make note to add in the periodic reporting to the council.
Also, can you, is there IGA for the Downtown Development Authority? Since we are addressing the South Fulton Development Authority, can we go ahead and can you work with Mr. Pike to get an IGA for the Downtown Development Authority? And if they're requesting any American Rescue Funds, to go ahead and put that forth to the council as well, so we can just kill two birds with one stone?
Yes, ma'am, I can do that.
Okay. All right, I would like to, at this time, make a motion that we adjourn the work session for September fourteen, twenty twenty one.
I make a motion to adjourn. So move.
Okay, Mr. Adams, can you call the roll?
That's the motion to adjourn. Councilmember Rao?
Yes.
Councilmember Gums?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Willis?
Yes.
Councilmember Gil Yard?
Yes.
Councilmember Reeves?
Aye.
Councilmember Khalid?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Aye.
We adjourned at six twenty eight PM.
Okay, colleagues, we have a zoning meeting that's, that we can go right into. It's only one item on the agenda to, from my, to my understanding, I think it's a withdrawal. So if we, if we want to, we could go ahead and hear that item and close out the zoning hearing and then take a five minute or a ten minute break before we have executive session. Is that a meeting number to everyone?
Yes.
Okay, so at this time, I entertain a motion for Mr. Adams. Can you please go ahead and proceed for us to open the zoning hearing for September fourteen, twenty twenty one?
Yes, you're calling the meeting to order at six twenty nine. This is a roll call. The Honorable Catherine F. Rao, District One.
Present.
The Honorable Carmen Lita Gums, District Two.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim, the Honorable Helen Z. Willis, District Three.
Present.
The Honorable Naima Gil Yard, District Four.
Here.
The Honorable Corey A. Reeves, District Five.
Accounted for.
The Honorable Councilmember Khalid, District Six.
Present.
And the Honorable Mark Baker, District Seven.
Thank you, Ms.
May I ask a point of information, Mayor Pro Tim?
Can you finish up and then I'll recognize Mr. Councilmember Khalid, can you finish up your statement, Mr. Adams?
Yes, thank you. Madam Mayor Pro Tim, we do have a quorum and would like to note for the record that Mayor Honorable William Bill Edwards is absent.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Khalid, you had a question?
Councilmember Baker is present.
Okay.
Thank you.
The benefit of those viewing us on the internet, we are still in the same YouTube. We don't have to like close and open again or anything like that, which would be great, actually.
To answer your question, no, our contractor is able to run them simultaneously, so we're fine.
Okay, thank you. At this time, we have a quorum and I would like to convene the the zoning hearing for September fourteen, twenty twenty one. Mr. Adams, can you please sign the item? We only have one item on the agenda, correct?
That's correct. This item is for presentation and public hearing only, Z twenty one dash zero one two. Council to consider rezoning at Zero Stonewall Tail for the purpose of developing an age-targeted single-family subdivision. This is located in District Two. Staff?
Thank you very much. Today, the petitioner actually asked for a deferral to next month's hearing in order to have more public involvement at the request of the council member.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor Pro Tim, you don't need a motion at this meeting. No, we don't take any votes.
That's correct. Thank you for reminding me. This zoning has been postponed until next month. And so at this time, I entertain a motion to adjourn the zoning hearing. That is the only item on the agenda for today. And then I'll entertain, and then I'll entertain a motion for executive session after we close out the zoning here.
Madam Mayor Pro Tim? I'm sorry. Yeah, you can't close the meeting out because at the end, executive session is part of the meeting. So you would have a motion to recess to executive session. And once we return from executive session, you will adjourn the zoning public hearing at that time.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you for clarifying what we need to do. I entertain a motion, well, I'll make the motion. I'll make a motion that we recess such as executive session for real estate personnel and litigation.
Second.
The motion has moved to second. Can you go do a roll call?
It's a roll call vote to recess for executive session for real estate personnel and litigation. Councilmember Rao?
Yes.
Councilmember Gums?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Willis?
Yes.
Councilmember Gil Yard?
Yes.
Councilmember Khalid? And Councilmember Baker?
So we're just going to skip over Councilmember Reeves?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry if I missed you. Councilmember Reeves, I said it, I ain't enough, you heard me.
I didn't, sir, I'm sorry. Aye.
All right, thank you. And Councilmember Baker?
Okay, so.
Aye.
Okay, so let's take a ten minute break and go into executive session. Let's do a ten minute break and report to executive session at six forty three. Is a ten minute break sufficient for everyone?
Yes.
Okay, let's do a ten minute break and we'll report at six forty three. Thank you.
Recording stop.